Good evening and welcome to the meeting, regular board meeting of the St. Peter School Board. It's Monday, November twentieth, two thousand and twenty-three. St. Peter Community Center Governor's Room. We will call the meeting to order. If there are any members of the public who wish to speak, please make sure to get your name on a card to Sarah so that we can call on you. But let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands alone nation under God, in its law, liberty and justice for all.
We need to consider and adopt the agenda, which is before you and also in the board book.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda is adopted. Sarah, do we have any requests to speak?
We do.
We do now. Uh, next up is approval of the consent agenda items. These items can be found in your packet in front of you and also in the board book.
Mr. Chair, I do have a change to the consent agenda on page nineteen on the list of two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four winter coaches, about three quarters of the way down the page at wrestling. Wallace Michaels will not be middle school coach for wrestling, but will be Jeremy Berger. So if you could note that change for inclusion in the consent agenda.
Thank you.
I move we, uh, pass the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any other items to pull out or discuss? We will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consent agenda is approved. Next up is our student spotlight. We have Samuel Martinez from the middle school.
Well, thanks for having us this evening. So as you guys know, each month, teachers nominate students for the call student of the month. And Samuel Martinez was fifth grade nominee last month. So I'll read what his teachers wrote about him. And then we've got a few questions for Samuel, just so you guys can get to know him a little bit. So Samuel is a great example of Saints pride. He's a really hard worker in class. He's very polite, always remembers to say thank you to everyone around him. He's very kind to his classmates and he's responsible and organized. So Samuel, thanks for being here tonight. So we're about a quarter and a half in so far. Oh, we forgot to push the button. Shoot! So we're about a quarter and a half in of school. What do you think of fifth grade so far?
Hmm, I think it's fun.
Thinks it's fun? Anything that you particularly really, really like about fifth grade?
Teachers.
The teachers, what do you like about your teachers?
Fun.
They're fun? Mr. Doherty's not here, but I gotta ask, is it better than north? Yeah, you don't have the answer. Can you, can you tell these guys, what is your favorite subject so far?
Math.
Math, and what do you like about math? Has math always been a favorite or is it just now?
Now.
Yeah? Uh, I know who your teacher is, does it have anything to do with him? Mr. Hell gets pretty cool, isn't he? Yeah. What activities are you involved in outside of school? Do you do anything else besides sit around and study, doing math?
Play basketball.
Play basketball, do you play here at the community center? Cool. Uh, and do you do some traveling with that basketball team? Or just here, just here in town?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, traveling. Did you have a tournament this weekend? How'd that go?
Not good.
Not good? That's okay, that's okay. So I ask this of our, of our student spotlights. And you're, you're only in fifth grade, so you got a lot of time to think about this. But if you had to pick your, your dream job, what would it be?
Soccer player.
Soccer player, what team would you play for? Any ideas? The Loons, are you a Loons fan? Ouch! All right, and then my last question for you. So every teacher that I talked to talked about how polite and how nice you were. Where does that come from? Is that something that you and your family talk about a lot? Is it important to you to be nice and polite? Why is that important to be nice and polite for you?
It's fun if I'm nice, people like my friends.
Yeah, more friends when you're nice and polite. And, and a little trick, when you're nice and polite, people are nice and polite back to you, aren't they? Excellent. You guys have any questions for Samuel?
Samuel, who did you bring with you tonight? Do you want to tell us who your family?
Do you want to introduce your family?
My dad and my mom.
Awesome, anything else from the board?
I have a question. Do you eat the lunch at school or do you bring your own lunch?
At school.
What is your favorite food at school?
Pizza.
Pizza! Nice.
Good answer.
Did you, did you try the cheeseburger pizza the other day? It looked good. I didn't get it.
I was there one day and I was impressed at all of the fruits and the vegetables. That is amazing, the spread of fruits and vegetables they have. Like, I'm not just saying that, like, that is quite displayed. Yeah, that's awesome.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you so much, Samuel.
All right, good job, Samuel. Next up is our student council report. Kira and Molly. Not both at once.
So Kira and I are both members of the St. Peter Student Council. And currently, we're kind of in a lull after homecoming. There isn't much that we do up until Snow Week starts, which is like mid-February. So right now, we're just working on Thanksgiving. We do an annual, like, Thanksgiving bingo, so just working on that, but nothing else really.
Uh, there's a few other things going on, like, at the school outside of student council we can talk about if you guys want to hear about that too.
Please, sure, yeah.
Uh, well, recently, we hosted our annual NHS induction to induct new members, which was very successful. And I think we, I think it was about thirty new members joined during that induction, so that was very exciting. And then, uh, many of you probably attended, but this past weekend, the theater department put on their musical Into the Woods. So that was, from outside perspective, that was really fun to go see all their hard work and stuff.
Um, and then also, recently, on the past Friday, we had celebrated Indigenous Peoples' Day at St. Peter High School. So we had an early release and the whole day was dedicated to learning about Native Americans culture. And, um, so we basically just went to different stations during the day and learned different things from, um, like historians or Native Americans. And then we got to eat a lunch that was Native American and it was really awesome. I thought it was really fun. I think a lot of people enjoyed it. There's like, we did a teepee raising in the gym, which was really cool to see, and yeah.
No, I agree, it was, it was really cool to see like a different side of, like, a culture I hadn't experienced before. And the lunch was amazing, I'll say. Yeah, I think that's it. Is there any other questions or anything?
You know, for future reports, I won't put you on the spot tonight, but I would love to hear, um, maybe a spotlight about something that's going on in your academic courses, like something that you're working on or big projects that, you know, a certain course is working on for future reports.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that you wore a uniform tonight.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yep. Mock trial season.
Thank you very much for the update. We've got some action items next on the agenda. The first is to consider approval of memorandum of understanding with the Office Support Unit.
Yes, we, uh, there's an MOU before you. I think, um, Principal Engeldinger gets some kind of little trophy or award or something for having creative solutions to some of our challenges, one of them being, um, childcare leaves of staff. And so tell us your, your creative solution that you and your staff came up with.
Right, there's really no such thing as a shortage at St. Peter High School if you can be creative about it. So Amanda Blue, our, one of our amazing fax teachers, is on maternity leave. Congratulations to her. It's not terribly easy to fill this, that slot because it's such a specialized position, especially for, um, her culinary arts classes. So our new fax teacher has gone on an overload and is taking on her one culinary arts class this year. And Betsy Bloom, our new student services secretary, has a teaching license and so she's taking on her two sections of child development. That created a problem with the clerical contract because they don't have any language written in there. So if she was going to part-time clerical, that would have affected her benefits, which we didn't want that to happen since she was willing to help us out, so therefore.
So we wrote up an MOU with the St. Peter Office Support Bargaining Unit, saying that she could take a temporary part-time leave as an office support employee to serve as a substitute teacher, that the leave will be for three hours per day for ten weeks and that they will receive long-term substitute pay instead of office support pay during this time. Office support benefits will remain in effect during the MOU and a substitute office support person will be in place for three hours per day during the UMO. What did I say? M-O-U.
MSU.
Memorandum of Understanding. And that the MOU will be in effect November seventh through January twelfth, which happens to be my birthday. And so the Office Support Unit has agreed with this and, um, so we just need your okay to put all of this in place. And it's already happening, so we hope that we get it.
Thank you, and thanks to Betsy Bloom too for being willing to pitch in like that. And she's doing a great job. And Amanda has baby girl.
Who to approve the MOU?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have approved the memorandum of understanding with the Office Support Unit.
Just called it a move.
Uh, item number two, Mr. Rarkas is here. We need to consider approval of a cooperative with Minnesota Valley Lutheran for wrestling.
Yes, they use, so, um, very similar to the, in August, when I came in to speak about the cooperative with Niclet for Swimming, very similar in that MBL reached out, uh, they've reached out to a couple other schools about having some of their students participate in wrestling. They, um, other schools said no for a variety of reasons, but we're talking with Coach Hanson and Coach Timberman and looking at kind of what they were bringing. It wasn't going to impact us going up to a certain, you know, the next classification, wasn't going to impact, you know, what events we go to or busing or coaching or anything along those lines. And it was just a chance for others to participate. They were thinking and looking at about three students coming up and looking at our numbers. You know, they're, the association has pretty strong numbers right now, but it through the, through the programs from seven through twelve isn't skyrocketing, so it is only going to help with practice numbers and participation overall. So they were okay with it, which is why we've gone through the motions of talking with the conference and our region and other things, and now bringing it here.
Did they have an existing program that they no longer can carry or these were just individuals interested in participating?
To my knowledge, they've not, they have not had wrestling on their own, at least recently. Um, and I know that they had had, um, some, tried to talk with schools closer to them, but again, for whatever reasons, if it bumped up schools to classification or whatever, they were turned down. And so we were kind of the next one that was an option for them.
Do you know Shay if they cooperate in other, any other sports with other schools?
They do with New Ulm, you know, obviously, logistically, makes sense. But, um, I think they, New Ulm said they were kind of under a situation where they were reviewing a lot of their co-op, so we're not in the position to say yes until they had a chance to go through that. But by then, it would be, you know, kind of the wrestling season would be pretty much done. So it was more to make sure we could give them a chance to participate before the season started or as the season started rather than January or whenever that would have been, so.
And this cooperative agreement could be dissolved from, by either side at any time.
Correct. Yep, so, um, you know, and they would be, um, you know, registering through MBL but paying our fees, so the fees would be coming to us. Again, doesn't impact where we go or who goes where for which events, but, um, you know, that would be one piece of it as well, so. But yeah, they could, you know, dissolve if all of a sudden, you know, they decided to go up a sleepy eye or somebody closer, you know, which wouldn't hurt us, but, you know, that could happen as well, maybe next year, but.
Like, we had talked about this at committee too. We had talked about how Coach Hanson was, I always kind of defer to the coaches and he was in full support of this and.
Actually, him and Coach Timber were the ones that brought it to me. So, you know, they were in, in full support. And, um, one of the assistant coaches is, um, would be coming over as an assistant football coach at MBL, but would be coming over to help coach wrestling at the junior high level, has a lot of experience coaching wrestling at that level, Mankato Prior, but, um, so that'll be a nice addition as well if, if approved.
I make a motion to approve the co-op with MBL for wrestling?
Second.
Any further discussion? I do have a question. We're not responsible for transportation or?
Correct, yeah, so they, um, actually today and tomorrow, they're kind of testing out which, because they have buses that drop off from MBL here in St. Peter and also in Mankato. They're kind of doing trial runs to see which one gets them to the school faster, being that apparently as Mankato would then be able to bring them here or when they have, we have events where they gotta leave school early, it's up to them to figure out how that's going to be logistically, you know, on their end. So it doesn't, you know, we aren't required with getting them a van home or anything like that. You know, it's their job to get to our school, but then we take them from there.
Okay, thanks. So we do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have approved the cooperative with MBL for wrestling. Thanks, Shay. Action item number three, consider approval of policies with legislative requirements or approval with one reading.
So exciting policy. It's one of my favorite, favorite meetings. Actually, I do kind of enjoy working on policy. You have three policies before you, all three of them because of legislative changes, which means that it can be accepted in one reading instead of the traditional two. Uh, the first, we made quite a few changes to as a committee. The, the MSBA model policy for this basically took the entire statute and put it into the policy. And we thought, instead of putting all of that into policy, we would just refer back to the, the Read Act. And so basically, the policy says, as a district, we will follow the language of the Read Act. And then if there are changes legislatively in the coming session or in a couple of years, we won't have to go back and change all the language pieces that they had in there. So we did try to simplify that. We also made some of the similar changes to the online instruction, took out sections that didn't apply to our district. And then transportation non-public school students didn't have quite as many changes. It just added a section that said, uh, you could negotiate with a non-public if you wanted to provide transportation. We contract for our, for our transportation, so it doesn't have a huge effect on us. But the option is there should we ever go that route. And I don't know if the committee members had anything more to add or?
I've heard nothing about this, any problems with this. And I believe that it was strategic and simplification that makes it much more applicable for what we did.
These were, these were one readings, right?
Yep.
So I would move that we accept the, the policies with legislative requirements for approval with just one reading.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Any further discussion or question? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Policies six twenty-one, six twenty-four, and seven zero eight have been approved at first glance. Thank you, Policy Committee. Hi, we are moving on to informational items. Tammy Skinner is here for Community and Family Education Report and Profile.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for allowing me to share the good things that have happened over the last school year. If I could draw your attention to the report, I'm going to be referring to some of the photos as I go through it. On the first page, you'll see a variety of photos. And what's unique to community ed is that every community offers different kinds of programming. That's because we are charged with meeting our community's needs. So the things that you see in St. Peter may not be offered in other communities in this area. The top left picture you'll see is a photo of our Summer Spark Program. That's an art program where we go out into the community and provide free art programming to students. To the right of that is one of our kids' cooking classes. The lower left is a student in our Saints overtime. She just made an art project. And then the bottom right is one of our adult basic ed classes. We had the Unique Quilters Guide come in, or Guild, I'm sorry, come in and offer sewing classes to our students. So you'll see that we, we do a lot of different things. And one of the things is that studies show that adults who participate in community education programming are more likely to support the school district as a whole. Community and family education also helps strengthen our community and schools in a variety of ways. One of those is by providing safe, accessible learning environments and opportunities for people of all ages. And we are lucky to be able to use all of our school district buildings as well as the community center to do that. Connecting families to school and community resources is another way that we are involved. Family and parental support is provided through the Early Childhood Family Education Programs or ECFE classes and the School Readiness Preschool Programs. We also collaborate with a variety of local organizations such as the Public Library, the Senior Center, Public Health, and the Food Shelf, and the Rec Department to offer free services. Helping prepare kids for kindergarten is another way that we help our community, whether it's early childhood screen, education screening that supports a child's learning and helps identify some things where maybe we need to help them out a little bit, to preschool classes at the Early Learning Center. And you've heard over the last year from Mateve and all of the great things that she and her staff are doing in meeting all of those needs and getting kids prepared for kindergarten. And preparing kids for kindergarten is one of the ways that community and family education helps the district meet its world's best workforce goals. Supporting working families at Saints overtime provides parents with that option to have some safe, quality experiences for their children, whether it's after school and programs that are held at South Elementary and North Elementary or during the summertime at North Elementary. And during the last school year, we served one hundred and eighty-one students in our programs. And Shayna C. and the staff do a great job of providing, um, a lot of fun activities for kids, educational, recreational, all different ways that kids grow and learn through play. And you can see that in the photos that are reflected below there. We also expand learning beyond the school day in our program. So our after-school enrichment programs help support the social, emotional, and academic needs of students. And they also assist in reducing the achievement gap for some of our learners. We provide students with the opportunity to explore interests and develop skills beyond the school curriculum. Students who enroll in art, drama, music, and STEM classes learn critical thinking and problem-solving skills that also then carry on into their school day. And we also find that engaging students in leadership and service activities builds strength and then also helps mitigate some of the risk-taking behaviors that some students have. If you'll notice, the photo on the right is our summer STEM workshop that was held at South. Building a qualified workforce is another way that we meet community needs. Our adult basic education programs help adults acquire the skills and qualifications to become employed and self-sufficient members of our community. As you notice here in the photo to the right, um, we have an annual graduation ceremony. And during this ceremony, four adults earned their high school diploma, one received their GED, and two that were not pictured became citizens after participating in the citizenship test prep class. Our classes are free. In addition to helping adults earn their high school or their GED diploma, we also offer English language classes and then, as I referred to, the citizenship test preparation. Last year, we served adults from Djibouti, Ethiopia, Ghana, Guatemala, Honduras, Kenya, Mexico, Samoa, and Somalia, and Thailand. And in addition to those classes, we also over, offer a program called the Bridge to Work Readiness. And in that program, job skills such as interviewing, resume writing, situational judgment, and digital literacy are taught. Another way that we help our community is improving the quality of life. Lifelong learning has many advantages. Some of those are relieving stress, fostering creativity, providing a sense of accomplishment, and improving mental clarity. And enrolling in art classes like the one pictured to the right, learning to play an instrument or a skill such as scuba diving or acquiring tips in a driver's safety class or attending a yoga class, those are all different ways that we engage people in our community. And finally, community ed creates a sense of belonging and community with people. We provide opportunities for people to get to know each other. People that may never meet will, in community ed classes, have the opportunity to have conversations with each other, whether that's attending the annual Women Celebrating Women event or participating in a cross-cultural learning experience, that's the picture on the left, watching a documentary at the Historical Society or sharing a meal or gathering to discuss issues. We connect people in our community. And in the past year, we partnered with twenty-five organizations and businesses, places such as the Historical Society, the Arts Center, St. Peter Yoga and Dance Studio, Niclet County Public Health, and the Good Neighbor Diversity Council. We also served over fourteen thousand people. And this is starting to get back to our pre-COVID numbers, which is great. It was a twenty-one percent increase over the preceding year. And I know you see a big collage of photos. I thought I would just highlight the photos in the corner here. The top left is one of our STEM classes that was held at South Elementary. And the top right is from the Women Celebrating Women event. The lower left is Kumbaya, a performance on Juneteenth from the Minnesota Humanity Center. And the lower right is a documentary film at the Historical Society. So as you can see, we provide a lot of different activities and programs for people in our community. Does anyone have any questions?
You said it's coming back to the pre-COVID levels?
We are, we are building up, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Information item number two, uh, is we are going to move to the December meeting?
Correct, they were not able to make it this evening and so we will slide them another month. They, they've had a very busy month though.
Uh, then information item number three, middle school H-back and academic space project discussion.
Yes, this has been a discussion for, gosh, probably, I think it's been about a year and a half now. And we've been working on, uh, the middle school project or the possibility of a middle school project. As many people know, we've had some temperature issues, some water issues. While some classes might be fifty degrees, two doors down might be ninety degrees. And there's a general lack of fresh air in the building. And we also know that it was designed as a high school in nineteen fifty-seven. And some of those spaces are pretty much the original spaces and designed for a nineteen-fifties high school science classroom, which don't really meet the needs very well of middle school in modern times. And so, we know that we need to do something with the boilers, which are also the original boilers from nineteen fifty-seven. And so, it kind of makes sense that things are starting to break down a bit, and we need to do something to make sure that we're keeping the middle school a viable asset for our school district and our community. So, we are trying to be very planful. We've had several meetings of the school board in study session and in committees, having discussions about the scope of this work and what it would entail, most likely a two-to-three-year project. And so, earlier this evening, we had a study session. We had a presentation from ICS and from Baird Financial, who went over the scope of work that would need to be done to fully replace the HVAC system at the middle school. And after gathering some feedback, some of the scope that makes sense at this time to update the building to be more efficient and just a more comfortable place to be for our students and our staff members. So, I just wanted to continue the conversation here a bit. Anything that board members wanted to say about the project? Or where they see things moving in the next couple of months here?
Yeah, I think I would start by saying, I mean, we've had some good discussions about, you know, what needs to be done, what could be done, what's feasible, what might not be. And I think that we, as we are learning from Mr. Graff and from others at the middle school, is there are some significant issues that need addressing, and we know that we need to do that. And time might be of the essence in terms of cost and functionality at that building. So, yeah, I think it's, we've had productive conversations, and I think we're going to have to have some even more productive conversations in the near future to make decisions about where to go.
And I think, like, the big thing for me is we have to fix the boiler. We have to fix the chiller. We have to fix those things. And having all of that ripped apart, kind of like when I'm doing my kitchen, right? Have it all ripped apart. Sometimes you put that little bit of extra money in to get some of those other upgrades that really truly need to be done, instead of putting it all back together. And then, in like ten years, ripping it all apart to get those extra couple of things that you should have probably done when it was all ripped apart to begin with, in Tracy speak. So.
Well said.
Right, true.
Yeah, that's exactly.
And I think the focus here has to be just the learning environment for our kids and the fact that their surroundings are matching the quality of the education that they're going to get here. So, it makes it safer, more productive for the kids' experiences.
Oh, and my other thought is costs are just a ridiculous number to hear. And when people hear that number and they think we're being ridiculous, I can assure you, we are not being ridiculous and that we have really done a good job in cutting back. And there really is no fluff in here. And I can say that, and I really truly mean it. Not, we are not spending people's money frivolously. We're not putting in jacuzzi hat tubs and anything crazy. There's just nothing crazy there.
Right.
Like, we're just trying to get so we don't have to move cups around on windowsills to catch water. That's what we're trying to do here, so. But the numbers just, they're just, they're just high-sounding numbers because that's just how much it costs to do stuff these days, so. Okay, now I'm done.
Right, and I think that the point is well-made that if you're, if we're replacing all the heat ducts against a wall or a univent that takes up, you know, a good chunk of the wall, when you take that out, you can just put a board over it and call it a day. Or you can paint the wall and fix the floor and make it look better than, than just a hole left in the wall. And so, I think those are the kinds of things that are happening. It's, you know, painting a wall when we're taking out part of it, putting in new floor because we're taking out things that are, there's no flooring underneath them. And just some general upgrades that most people wouldn't think would be a big deal, but when you multiply it by a couple hundred thousand feet and classrooms, that it adds up, so. Our plan is that we will be coming back to the school board next month after having more conversations about the project and considering things and maybe looking to take some action next month to move forward with the project.
Yeah, I think it's important to take some time to consider it. And I look forward to hearing in December reactions from staff as they see the plan and so forth.
That's it.
Any other comments or questions on that? All right. Reports. Mateve, y'all want?
Mateve wants to get home for Monday night football.
I will say that Doreen is not here because today is her sixtieth birthday. And she asked to be excused.
She thinks that's an excuse for missing a board meeting.
Now, Mr. Doherty, I don't know.
Probably, yes. All right, so, early childhood. We are just in the middle of conferences. We had one night of conferences last week. We have one tomorrow night, and then all day on Wednesday, we have our conferences. So, we're excited to get parents in our building, share all the fun things that we've been doing and all the progress their kids have made this first quarter. This is not new, but it's something I haven't reported on. Just, we have a little guest literacy program in early childhood. And so, one Monday a month, Brenda McHugh from the Public Library comes, and she brings a bunch of books with her into storytime with groups of kids throughout the day, as well as allows some kids whose parents have signed up for them to check out, do book checkout, too, so they can borrow books from the library, get their library card, et cetera. And then, our very own Nancy Sizer, who you may remember retired from South like three years ago. She's, but we just keep pulling her back in. She's doing early childhood family ed. She's also one of our readers. She comes in twice a month and does two different things for us. Her focus is I See Myself in Books, and that's that opportunity for kids to hear stories and see kids in those books who reflect them. And so, that's very important to our program, as well as now she's starting to integrate our themes from our social-emotional learning curriculum. And so, being kind, being thoughtful, all of those things. So, we really appreciate both Nancy and Brenda coming in to share their talents with our kids. And everyone looks forward to those days, so that's fun. And then, just lastly, you may all remember that we lost Gina Iverson last spring. She's been in our program a number of years. Oh, my gosh. And her memorial bench. Can you finish for me?
There's a beautiful memorial bench in her name at the Early Childhood Center.
So, stop it and see it. Take your picture. It is beautiful.
Yeah.
It's weird going next. Greetings from St. Peter Middle School, since Darren's not here to say that about North. Sixth graders are going to BizTown tomorrow in St. Paul. BizTown is an interdisciplinary unit where our teachers incorporate junior achievement, financial literacy, and work and career readiness lessons into their days. While they're at BizTown, students run, you know, mock businesses, US Bank, and a radio station, and a food court. Super fun time where kids earn paychecks and then spend that money. And while they're there, students work on leadership, teamwork, civic responsibility. They do some cost-profit analysis. They do some marketing strategy, and then they kind of examine how their role as a citizen of BizTown impacts that larger community. And then, the goal of the whole experience is to pay back that business loan that they took out to start that business. In addition, our fine arts students are preparing for their winter concert series. Our fifth-grade music course led by Jamie Abels will go first on December 5th at seven o'clock PM. And then, we'll have the rest of the concerts throughout the month of December. And all of those happen at the High School Performing Arts Center. And lastly, last week marked the one-year anniversary of Emily Crock's passing. If you remember, Emily Crock, former ESL teacher at St. Peter Middle School, incredible teacher, colleague, and friend, who touched the lives of countless students, both here and in Mankato. We have also purchased a bench, made possible by our student council. They raised money through dances to purchase that bench. And that bench, when it is delivered, will go on Capitol Drive and just kind of be a reminder to us all of the great work that she did and how much she touched all of us. In the back of that bench, the backrest, will have Emily's mantra, which is, "Be the light." And we'll continually have that reminder every time we walk in the building.
First of all, I want to point out just how proud former board member Bob Meeks, who's looking down from heaven at your T-shirts. His favorite, his favorite high school activity was mock trial. He was very proud of that program, so, well done. I know that the girls already talked about our Indigenous Joy Day that we had last Friday. And thanks to everybody who played a part in making that happen. Couple of interesting things. We, our sports marketing class had, they did all of the, actually, really lovely posters and advertising for it. They did the press releases. So, that was a really great, real-world project for them. And another interesting thing that's come about from it, we have a new partnership with the Minnesota Humanities Council. They, John Warren attended a conference in Birmingham, Alabama, and came back highly motivated to make change happen at home, which was kind of the impetus for last Friday's day. And we had a, we had a guest from the Humanities Council come to the, come to the day on Friday, and they would like to partner with us on helping us put on more, more events like last Friday's. So, thanks to those of you who came. Kate ended up being a guest presenter. As always happens at conferences, we had a couple no-show presenters, but we had Kate Martins. So, you could, you could, so, you could tell she had been a teacher. So, like, she did a great job, so thank you a ton. And the musical, you guys already touched on that, was fantastic. Sondheim musical, that is no easy task, and our kids were amazing. So, that was very fun, and they were still standing today after a really long and tiring weekend. And I will pass the microphone on to Ms. Sikora.
Yes. Well, I want to say thank you to Annette and the high school staff for letting the Rock Bend students come over and participate. We had almost perfect attendance of students. They were really excited to go back to the high school and engage in that day. So, thank you, it was very well done to your whole team. Right now, we are just like the high school and middle school getting to mid-quarter. We have parent-teacher conferences coming up on December 6th for us. We also have night school starting. This is session one. We've got thirty-two students registered. We go from November twenty-seventh until December twentieth. So, I'm always so grateful for the teachers that volunteer to help us out and get our students through that program, so thanks to them. And then, continuing our work with Character Strong, we've gotten really good feedback from kids and families about that. And we will be doing some walkthroughs just to get more observations of how it's going in the classroom, as well as partnering with principals on that.
Thank you all. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Guess it's my turn. Kind of piggybacking off of what Annette was talking about. The Humanities Center is who we partnered with, excuse me, with the Juneteenth celebration that happened in the summer. And from that came the opportunity for some teachers to go to the conference. So, I sent it to Annette, and Annette sent it to the teachers. And then, he goes to Alabama, he gets inspired, he comes back, plans this huge event. And the Humanities Center comes here to kind of witness what was going on. And from what I understand is that she, as she went through the day, kept saying, "Ah, this is what healing looks like in a community. This is what it looks like to really understand each other, understand our history, and how we are still a part of it." And so, it was, it was very moving, and she was very supportive of planning future events that are similar for other segments of our culture. And so, we're, we're giving them, what, a week and a half off before we start planning for what our next event that is similar might look like and how that might help us continue to grow in our inclusion and diversity work here in St. Peter. So, thank you again to all of those who took part. I know that the Good Neighbor Diversity Council funded a good deal of the activities that day and paid for some of the speakers and the drumming. And so, we appreciate their support in this work as well. I also need to mention that Monday, December eighteenth at six-thirty will be the Super Bowl of Education Finance. It is the Truth in Taxation Hearing, which is always a very exciting opportunity to hear more about education finance. And I know that Megan Gracia, our business manager, is looking so forward to that event and can't wait to speak for hours on end about education finance. Right?
Sometimes at all.
Perfect.
All of that was so sincere.
I really, I really do like geek out on speaking about education finance and legislative changes and all that, but I know it's not shared by everyone.
She is so lucky to have you.
I said, bring graphs and spreadsheets, and everybody loves those. That's it.
All right, board member updates around the table.
I'm good.
I've got nothing.
Yeah, I'm going to the MSBA Delegate Assembly, December first and second. That's where they start working on the legislative platform for the School Board Association. So, that will be my main activity between board meetings. I do want to say and echo everybody that talked about the play and last Friday's activities. I enjoyed both.
Yep, similar. Thank you to the cast, crew, and directors of, for putting on Into the Woods for us. It was a great show. Lot of fun. People loved it. So, nicely done. I'm proud of St. Peter in committing to the arts and sharing that with the community. I think that's an important part of what we do here, so, I'm thankful.
And I second that about the play. It was excellent. And the Fri, I know you've heard about the Indigenous Joy Day. I do, you'll hear more about it next, next month with the Shar's report on this. But this was an unbelievable event in the short amount of time that it was set up, the number of presenters, the number of scheduling alternatives that had to be done. And it was, it was absolutely amazing. I got comments from the dancers who were here that they were, first of all, so impressed that the school did this and that every school should do this. They were so thrilled, and they dance all over the area. And they danced all over the area. And then also their comment was how respectful and how interested the St. Peter students were. They were just really happy to be here. And they were here for the Indigenous Day Walk, and they were back here, and they'll come back. So it is a terrific model, and we look forward to good things. And the Good Neighbor Diversity Council, the district, and NAPAC, what an organization we have put together.
Thank you. We have some upcoming meetings of the school board. Policy Committee, Wednesday, the 29th at 4:00 PM in the district office. HR Committee, Thursday, the 30th at 4:00 PM in the St. Peter Middle School conference room. Study Session, Monday, December 4th in the media center at 6:30 PM. Education Committee, Friday, December 8th at 8:30 in the morning in the district office. Business Committee is Wednesday, December 13th at 4:00 from the district office. And we are right back here on Monday, December 18th for a full board meeting at 6:30 PM. Ms. Samer. I would retain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make motion adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.